I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, what's on the agenda is a -- will your citizens vote this time? Any person at this council not scheduled may speak to the council and anybody? Okay, moving on, public hearing, public hearing is scheduled on the proposed fiscal year budget to provide an opportunity for citizen comment. Town council may adopt the budget whether or not amendment by ordinance on one reading. Linda, I have a motion to -- I guess we're open. Public hearing? Public hearing is open. Anybody have anything to say about the budget? Nope?
Okay. I have a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion to close the public hearing. Hold on a favor.
Hi.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have a public hearing. We see on the proposed property tax rate to provide an opportunity for citizen comment. So tonight we're going to talk about the tax rate. We cannot adopt the tax rate until next month, and there's some protocols, procedures, but we're not going to adopt the tax rate tonight. We just have citizen input. Any questions about tax rate? Anybody? Andy?
What's your tax rate? It's a very basic question.
Thirty cents. That's what it is now. All right.
Thank you.
Last one. Great minutes. Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
A motion.
Okay, Eric has a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second? Sarah has the second. All who's in favor? Thank you. Okay, next up, we have consideration of amendment to the fee ordinance. That's Linda.
When we became a court of record, we -- there are transcription fees that we needed to have in our fee ordinance, so I just added the municipal court section.
Okay, so everybody understand?
Yes.
We don't pay those fees. The other person pays those fees.
And the fee that's in the ordinance is not -- they pay the cost of the transcription in addition to that fee.
So the 25 is the processing?
Just a processing fee.
Whatever paper, whatever media?
Right.
Where did you get the fee from?
Code.
Oh, it's a statutory thing. Okay, there you go. All right, any other questions? All right, do I have a motion to approve the fee ordinance as amended?
I make a motion to approve the fee ordinance as amended.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. All who's in favor? All right, thank you very much. All right, so that's that. All right, next up, Linda, can you hand me that printed copy of the chapter?
Okay. Linda, that's right.
Thank you. All right, so next up, we have consideration amendment of utility policy ordinance. So in this one, we talked about this last time. One of our loopholes in our -- between zoning and utilities was that in zoning, you are allowed to have a guest house. We have a couple that have smaller variants of guest house above the garage and things like that. So zoning says you can have a guest house, and utilities are silent on what happens if you have a guest house. So what we would have done is we would have made them get a separate tap and a separate water meter. We would have treated it like two houses, but technically there was nothing that said we could do that. So that was kind of the fix here. And you'll see it's on the bottom of page five. What I wrote there was secondary structures, meaning there's already a house there. This is second house, second structure, AC space of 1,000 square feet or more, then you have to have separate taps, and they can't be connected to the main house. They have to have your own water and sewer source. And that is what I wrote there. And then, of course, the next thing is that the taps, they have to pay the taps. You have to pay for installing, which is standard in ordinance, just to be clear. Okay?
So what about the structures that exist today that need this particular?
I don't think we have any structures that are only 1,000 square feet air conditioning that are secondary. We have some that are above garages, 500, 600 feet, and those are really not what we're trying to capture. What we're trying to capture is, you know, we have some three-acre lots that are still available, and people I've talked to are planning on building two houses on those lots. And so, you know, they're not going to build a guest house of 852 square feet.
No.
So. Okay? All right, do I have a motion to approve the utility policy ordinance?
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Trash surface?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know what to do about that. I guess I'm just asking, do you have two houses of more trash? Do you visit?
Yeah, because--
Because it's on the margin, it's not--
My guess would be that, yeah, I think by this time, they're going to get two new homes and just fold right into the utility building.
Yeah, okay, that's right.
Again, we haven't had this happen yet, but, you know, part of what I have to do is I have to try to anticipate issues before they happen.
No, it's just a certain thing that I heard say, right?
And I think this also helps us in that if, you know, Darryl decides to enclose his garage and turn it into a, you know, another area, then it's not 1,000 square feet. We don't -- we can't charge, you know what I mean? We don't, you know, it's easy. We don't have to charge. You don't have to get another tap. You don't have to do anything. You can run your toilet in there directly in the house whenever you want.
Yeah, it's not as 1,000 square feet, unfortunately.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions?
So how can we want to install this new policy? Like, what does benefit does it have to the town because of the additional cost of the lines?
Yeah, what it's basically doing is it's saying that somebody over here that has a 900-square-foot house is paying water, sewer, and garbage. Somebody over there builds a 3,000-square-foot guest house, and they pay nothing. That's really not fair. The main house is paying the water, sewer, and garbage. Now, I think design-wise, it'd be really tough to try and design it to utilize the same water and sewer lines, but it just seems logical. If fair's fair, how could you have a 3,000-square-foot house and you pay zero in utilities? That's not fair, you know? So it was more about that. And really, I don't think the person's got a perspective. It was giving us back stuff to say, look, logically, the main house is over here, the guest house is over there. Look, you got to pay for a tap. You need to get separate tap.
Well, it's not that they wouldn't be paying utilities, because it would just be tied into the main house, right?
It would be, but our sewer bill's flat.
Yeah, yeah.
Same with the garbage, right? So, and look, I don't expect this to change the universe. My expectation is this will never happen, but I really don't know, because we're in kind of no man's land with these bigger lots. I mean, some of these people, you got 3.3 acres over there that's sitting for sale, and if you give them 800 for the lot, I don't know what they're going to do, you know? But it's a lot of room to put one house on. And anyway, that's kind of-- Andy, do you have anything?
Happens with the all the time.
Do you have a guest house in there?
Oh, yeah, they have community social services.
Is this specific--
When they have large lots like that?
Yeah, like separate structure, not like meant to a house.
Right, these are secondaries. Secondary structure is not attached as well.
Yep.
Okay?
I got a quick question too, just to think about. What about like a causeway? Breezeway? When somebody connects your -- the roofs, you know, you can put a structure--
So is that considered secondary?
Five hundred, you know?
That would be considered attached, and it would be considered part of the main structure.
Oh, it adds in--
It's got to be full break.
Yeah.
And I mean, you know, at the end of the day, our objective is, you know, we're going to interpret it in a human, normal way. And we're not looking for a way to, you know, wedge this round pegged square hole. We're just, you know, just trying to-- Yeah. I mean, this is not meant to try. There's no, like, backdoor way. It's something everybody's going to get. You know, we're going to determine that your garage is now, you know, such a -- you get into a toilet, your garage.
And I have rain for a toilet in my garage.
All right, good questions. Any more?
I have a motion to approve the utilities policies as amended.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second. All who's in favor? Okay, thank you very much. All right, next up, we have consideration of temporary closure of green matter drive to through traffic. Okay, this is something which has come up. As you all know, we're having some issues in front of mailboxes and on green matter. We had, I think it was 32 cement trucks go through this morning shredding that. We have probably some in the neighborhood of 40 to 50 that are going to be coming through when we do green matter. There's now a fourth house that's going to be started on green matter. So I have two concerns. One concern is, I measured green matter the other day. It's 13 feet wide, so we're missing 15 feet of it. So it is just beyond one lane. So that's one issue. Imagine if we now have four houses underway with trades and everything else parked. That road's going to become impassable to try and get up and down. That's one aspect of it, because those lots aren't big enough where all the trades -- it's not like you're building the big one-acre thing where they can drive off. You're going to have cars lining that thing, especially the builder that's building. He owns or he's working on three of them for that to express the point is to be able to build them all at the same time. So we're going to have, you know, potentially three times as much action going on there. So that thing's going to become a zoo over there. That's part one. Nobody currently lives on it. Nobody needs to traverse that road. The person that lives at the very end, the driveway's on shoreline. So no one needs to go down that road at all, except for construction traffic to get to their job site. The other aspect about closing, basically what I'm talking about is closing the end near the sewer plant, temporary closing it, is that means all the cement trucks, all the lumber trucks, all the brick trucks have to go down high ridge and turn up green matter. They're not going to go down lake crest on our concrete shoreline on our concrete or go down and loop the block on parkwood on our concrete shoreline. We've got to keep them off our concrete. We, you know, that's the goal. So I'm trying to, again, before we -- I'd rather have them shred like they've already doing it, the 13 feet wide that we have on that road, and we'll just continue and rip it out and put a road base down. But so that's related. It's really two things. There's no way that road's going to be passable once they start construction. It's impassable. The second is, if we close that end temporarily, then they have to reroute down around the mailboxes, because it'll be a barricade there. They won't -- and once they real -- we can't get around it. So they won't shortcut down our concrete streets. So now, we're going to fix green matter. Green matter's going to go back to 24 feet concrete, the whole nine yards, but right now, we can't even try to patch that. We can't add 11 feet to a road right now. It's done. We can't even try. The best we can do is start a road base on it. And so this is the first time I brought it up, the first time I thought about it, but when I saw the fourth house plans--
What's the winner of these targets?
Two of them are already underway.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're already -- he's got a pad built on the water. One of them stopped. Yeah, three? Yeah, because there's watered piers. Where they dug the piers, they waited for a month to figure out how to do the engineering. That's why they've stopped.
Around the corner?
Yeah. They're going to start back up at the end of this month. But we saw plans for the corner lot, and too late when I was thinking about it, but at some point I may come to you guys and say, look, a lot on the corner of high ridge and green matter the corner has got a house going on. He wants to put his driveway on high ridge, which he can do, because he's on a corner lot, but I don't know how we can allow construction parking on high ridge when he's doing that corner lot, when we -- we already have enough trouble. People weaving and bobbing around the holes and, you know what I mean? So I may have to come to you, I think, and say, when that house starts, can we make no parking on the high ridge section? Make that guy either park on the lot or park on the side. You can't park on the street, because we know that area is congested, and that's a linear surface to begin with. So I may come to you next month and ask you about temporarily, you know, parking that. I'm just trying to think ahead before, you know. Anyway, so I open the floor to questions. It seem to make sense?
Yeah, I think that's how typical of green matter is to say to you, you know, we're messing with the town. So the only thing is, when they're coming down at high ridge, turn left, it's going to beat up high ridge really bad back in that turn that gets already gone.
And if you -- there's some ridges on that thing, yeah, so--
I mean, it actually might help--
32 houses. It helps out with the coro and care or whatever.
Yeah.
Like, it's starting, the trucks are like, make me go down.
Well, they, yeah, because they -- I had a van went back with a heavy truck, and he tried to bash it down. I tell him the guy go back and forth over the hall, you know, but-- Any other questions? And it's a temporary closure. It's not abandoning the street. We're not, you know--
We'll be able to put up over there and close it off?
It's just going to be, it'll be a text dot kind of, you know, railing kind of thing of, you know, illuminated stuff. There'll be a sign saying, road closed, you know? And we've told the builders, don't bring them down this street, you know? I may make them put up a flagman when they come in late and go. I may say to the guy, you're going to put somebody right here to stop them the day you're in, and send them this way, you know? We'll see when that comes, but they seem to be amenable, the builders. He understood, you know, look, you can't go down these streets. So I think we'll do everything we can to get them to not do that. And if they go down there one time and run into a barricade, they have backup. I don't know if you guys remember, we had a problem maybe two years ago when they were doing a house over here. The cement trucks came down the concrete, and then the guy started mixing it, and he forgot. And he went all the way up and down the streets while he was mixing, because it was, he wasn't ready yet in line, and he dumped it out the back of the truck. So he laid concrete up and down three of our streets, putting concrete out the back, just discharging the concrete. It was impressive. So we really want to keep the concrete section for a lot of reasons off the new concrete. Okay? Clint? Good?
Yeah. Motion to approve the temporary closure of green matter for the buildings.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Serena has the second. A silent second. All right, all who's in favor? Thank you. What was that, Serena? All right, next up, we have the budget. All right, so on the budget, I sent up a, let's see-- I can't read.
Go forward.
All right, concrete roads. All right, so update on the concrete roads. Okay, I talked to Kenley Horne. The survey guys were either out today or they're coming out tomorrow just to do some kind of walkarounds, I think to scope it out. They're starting the survey work very soon. They're a little behind. I'm going to try and push the schedule, because we've got to make us some time. Other than that, you know, that's kind of it as far as the design goes. I'm trying to think if there's something else. Oh, okay. So after tonight, either I'm going to take a hammer and beat myself over the head with it, or I want to put up a sign that says the concrete roads are coming in the spring of 2020. I've been harassed at restaurants. I've been harassed on lunch. I've been harassed when I go out to dinner. I'm getting tired of people harassing me about when are we going to do the streets. I've put in 28 mayor's letters in a row, and I can't sit down at a restaurant and eat without Lakewood Village people harassing me about the roads. So--
You think a sign is going to fix that, dude?
Yeah, I think--
I think if we put a sign in front of the mailboxes that says the concrete roads are, you know, concrete road project, road reconstruction, you know, spring, March, 2020, funded by--
Is there a way, so with just a sign, I want to step further, kind of giving them maybe a pre-line timeline, like not like what we look at, right?
Well, I'm going to put--
One of the things that's impressive is when you see that timeline, kind of all the steps that has to go into it, a normal person isn't going to really, like, I didn't know what goes into putting concrete road in prior to me looking at a piece of eight pieces of paper that says, here's everything you need to do, and here's all the steps you need to follow. Because I don't think the common individual would understand that. I think they think, oh, you just bring concrete trucks in, you kind of big step up, and you just--
Which is pouring dry.
I think they think you just click your fingers and imagine it's going to stop. The timeline that we see from Kenley Horne, does the public see that? Was that online? It is.
It is?
And I'm going to put it, it's funny you mention it, because I am going to put that in the mayor's letter. This, I've already started writing the mayor's letter to get them to understand. This is not a driveway.
Even people I talk to, they don't appear to be reading your mayor's letter to follow the steps of what's happening. But I think maybe if we publish something that was maybe out like by the mailboxes or somewhere where everybody has to go with kind of a timeline, like, hey, want a concrete road update? Read this.
How's possibly have the ability to do that?
You know, maybe it's a laminated piece of paper we throw up by the mailbox and say, read.
But see, but there are other things too about, I can't tell you how many real estate agents come in here and say, you know, your roads really suck, and I want to hit them over the head and say, we're doing the best we can. We've got brand-new roads coming in, you know, and real estate agents will come in here and say, you know, the reason why, you know, my client can't sell her house, like really. It's not that it's overpriced by 300,000. It's, you know, it's the road. I'm sure it is, you know? But I just want to convey the information to everybody. Any visitor comes into town, anybody that comes to visit you, look, I know we don't helicopter to home every day. We drive on the road. We get it, but help is coming. The whole brand-new roads are on the way. They're going to be here. Just give us a second, and we'll let us get on. So--
We're talking about it before, and I think the last time I heard it was like when we voted on the tax rate, it was kind of like the point of overturn. But maybe we moved it up, and tonight if we telegraph through the budget that we're going to raise the tax.
Well, because we, nothing we're doing is related to the actual road tax or road -- because we haven't issued bonds yet. But we're teeing everything up to the point where, look--
We're reaching the point of no return, right? Because we're committing the funds, we're committing the survey.
Yes. What we're reaching the point of is either do it or delay.
Right.
That's our, that's our point.
Point I'm trying to make is we kind of originally, we talked about the tax rate when we voted on that.
Yes, that's true.
But if you're getting a lot of, if putting in the mayor's letters and things like that isn't working after tonight, when we pretty much say, hey, the survey's starting, we're going to start on a progression of raising the tax rate to make the roads, then I'm comfortable if we go ahead.
Yeah, because it's time. I think it's time. And I think Andy has, I believe Andy has told, that's not, doesn't mean, it's not a commitment. We're not completely binding it. We say, roads are coming.
Kind of binding to your seat.
Yeah, I mean--
Well, yeah.
Actually, but it's not binding upon town, right?
Yeah, we haven't found any future council to continue the process or anything.
No, I, my only concern is that we're mature enough that we're, if there wasn't, we're on trajectory, we're going to do it, right? And I think we're there.
Yeah, I'd agree with that. I would agree. I mean, with all the steps we're taking in that timeline, I think the timeline is impressive. I think if people were to see the things that we're going to show a lot of, at least moving, because there are a lot of moving components to this.
Yes, there are.
Way more than I ever thought.
You can have your sign.
That's not how your dinner's going.
Nobody ever offers to buy my dinner. They just want to talk during my dinner.
You got your sign.
Okay, now, the other thing is, I'm sure everybody's aware, you know, mailbox area is being shredded. So basically, the best we can do is, tomorrow morning, we'll be out. I'll probably be wearing the flagman tomorrow morning. We're going to take the hump out. We're going to rip it all out. We're going to put down road base. We're not going to put asphalt or anything, because it's pointless. We'll just mount right back up again and form on the ridge. So basically, you see what happened in the other ridge. We put down a road base, and we drove over a lot. It hasn't turned into a pothole. It's not pretty, but there's no, the ridge never came back, right? So the first one we did, it's just got road base on. It's been compacted down. So what we do is about every week to 10 days, we go out, we sweep it back, back in the hole, you know, back just to make it a little bit better. But it hasn't turned into a pothole yet. That's our best solution right now. I did order a pallet of ready mix. So we have about 60 bags of the mix that we can use as temporary patches to reel poppers, holes.
That's what we did over here.
Yes, just--
That's held up pretty well, I think, right?
Clint, when Clint welded or I forget what you call it, the--
Or just heated up.
With the torch in there, it really held up well. So I've got that for holes, but we can't use that for mailboxes on the ridges. That's futile. So, you know, that's kind of, that's how I see this progressing. Just kind of, you know, I, again, you know, I'm repeating myself, but I've seen plans for five more houses in the shores. We're just going to get a million cement trucks are going to go through there, you know, before the fall comes in.
So it's going to become a regular thing. We're just going to have to keep patching and road basing and patching and--
We're just going to have--
Still in and, you know--
Like I was telling, now that we rip it out and put the road base down, it should just literally now be sweeping the road base back, putting it back in there, and letting it run over again.
Is that just loose, that road base?
It's loose, but it compacts as you drive over, but the top surface is, you know, smooth. No, but it binds down pretty good. It's just, you know, it's like pouring, you got a hole and pour stuff in it. There's going to be stuff on the top. We already did some work this morning early, right after cement trucks came through. We're putting more base on the corner, because we're trying to make the corners wider, right? To give you more approaching, rather than everybody being stuck hitting the same spot. Hopefully, the wider we make that radius, the more we'll kind of spread it out a little bit, right? It won't have everybody hitting the same spot over time. But the ridge hasn't built in the other, so I'm pretty confident that once we rip the asphalt out of the ridge, put down base, that it'll stick. We won't be doing more repairs. We'll just be doing sweeping kind of--
I mean, it'll be better than what we have now. That's the rough to go. I mean, we can't, as a town, we can't afford to just throw black tape on something. I mean, it cracks. It's not going to work. It's just not going to work.
Well, as, you know, as I'm going to say in the mayor's letter, I mean, look, we have the money to do an effective repair. If we do, we will not do the concrete roads. We cannot spend the money to do an effective repair, rolling it out, new base, doing everything.
Yeah, by effective repair, you mean basically tearing out all of the base and doing-- I think that's right.
We just can't do it. So--
I think that's a good message.
Your choice is to wait five more years, and we'll just do continuous patches for five more years, or we throw the road base down, we wash our cars every week, and--
You know, maybe if you put up a sign about the roads coming, that would help.
Maybe put it right next to the hump.
I want to bring you to my meals from now on, so you can answer the questions then. Come on.
I think it's a good message, though.
Okay, that's kind of all I have on the concrete roads. All right, next up, we have the consideration of the fiscal year 1920 budget. All right, so one of the things I did was I wanted to give everybody some numbers. They're not necessarily, you know, exactly, I'm not going to tie in another number here, but, you know, I get the updates every week from DCAT on what the values are in Lakewood Village, the appeals, everything like that. So as an example here, so in 2019, for this year, the total value as of about a week ago was about 113 million. And last year for the town was 105 million, okay? Now, if you want to figure the appreciation, we have a couple new houses which finished, so they're new on the roll. You got to take those out. They weren't here last year. So you got to compare apples with apples. And that's the way the tax district does it on a lot of things. When we get into tax rates, is you got to compare last year's people to this year's people, but you delete the new ones. You can't count the new ones for this year. So overall, in the last year, for all the houses in Lakewood Village, the average appreciation was a little over 6%. That's our historical average. Over the last 15 years, let's see, over the last 13 years, I have the numbers, we averaged about 6.2%. If you, we had negative numbers, we had big numbers, but generally speaking, we get about 6.2 for the city year on year, and then we also get about 1.5% because of the new houses. So we're at, we have about 7.5%, a little under 8% overall increase every year, our taxable values. That's about where we're at. It's nice, because it's not an unsustainable number. If this is '12, '13, '14, we know that that's got to reverse at some time. The appraisal district really hasn't caught up to Lakewood Village yet. They're still a little behind. But we're not suffering, and I think it's great, because I think our houses are underrated. So anyway, so that's where the six comes from. Now, the other thing that's important for the tax basis then is, how much does our taxable base, because every year, what happens is, there are more exemptions. People turn 65, they get an exemption. There's-- People turn 65, they get an exemption, there's, there's things that happen each year, people become disabled. So even though the, the appraisal values go up, it doesn't even get that much into taxable values. People get homestead exempted. So I got homestead exempted on mine because they raised my taxes by 40%. So you can't, my tax amount doesn't go up. So the taxable amount went from 100 million up to 106 of the same people. So if we did nothing and kept everything the same, then our taxes, our revenues would go up by about 5.6%. If we had no new houses, that's what would happen. That's our annual increase. Where this is going to come into play in the future is, when we talk about financing the new roads, we're going to embed in some of these numbers some growth to say, you know, what, in these years, we're going to assume we're going to get a little bit more money this year, a little bit more money, and, and that's going to be built into the model. Yeah.
Uh, just a quick question, is it typically correlated with market value and tax revenue? Are they usually-
Very close, yeah.
You don't get the capital, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's always going to be lower, the tax stuff, because, because if you get, you know, if you get over more than 10% in a year, the market value, the tax value only goes up by 10. So it kind of like has to be lower. But they're very close. Little, you know, most bigger cities, they're like right on the money because they have a lot of mass. With only 240 houses, you know, it's, it can skew it. Okay, so, so if you look at our numbers then, there's two pieces to your tax rate.